Okay, at this time I'll call the May 4th, 2017 meeting to order. Would you please stand and join in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have two items that we're going to add to our agenda. And the first one would be to review and consider a resolution amending the animal exposure resolution. And then the second, at the end of the meeting, we will have an executive session, and the purpose will be for non-elected personnel issues. And so with that, I'd move that we approve the amended agenda.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The consent agenda includes minutes of April 27th work session and the regular meeting, minutes of May 2nd special work session, payroll of $259,361.22, wire payments for utilities of $9,092.55, and abatements, $1,856.14. I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
And we have the motion and the second for approval of the consent agenda. Any further discussion or any item to be set aside for discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Commissioner comments. Craig, we'll go ahead and start with you.
Yeah, last Thursday I missed our regular meeting. I was in Clay Center with the North Central Regional Planning Commission. We went to Wardcraft Home, unique facility. They've been building 10 houses at a time and stuff. They've been in business since 1950s, '49, '50. It's the second generation. The gentleman's name was Ward, so they named it Wardcraft evidently. Really fine, I mean, well, Janelle's not here, but she went with us. And really nice structure. Then after lunch, we went over to GT, which make grain drying facilities. They've been in Clay Center about as long. They sell to 81 countries. We were watching a loaded truck, a container that was going over to the Philippines. There was nine grain dryers in that truck there. Their biggest problem there is that when they get them sold, they have to have them, you know, ready to go. They might have to work overtime so they can get that load out, catch the ship. Because if they miss that ship, it could be in there six, eight weeks before they can catch the next ship. But really, small business of the year for Kansas. Just another fact, they sold one in Laos. And it was hauled in by water buffaloes. It took seven water buffaloes to take it up the trail to get it where it was. It was a 220 bushel dryer. Their biggest one they make, which is 880 bushel. Laverne probably remember Lynn, there used to be, you know, you'd go around in the 50s, oh, 60s and 70s. It seemed like every farmer had one now. It's not that way, but they're still, their overseas market is tremendous. But their biggest one is 880 bushel. That's all I have. Like I said, nice business town. I was gonna say their work schedule, they used, when the gentleman started there, they used to work 8 to 5. And if they had overtime, which they had to get production done, they'd have to stay late, which a lot of them had second jobs or liked to farm. So now they've moved their schedule, they start at 6:00. So if they have to work overtime, they can still get off in time at night to suit to their other job stuff. That's all I have, Lynn.
Okay, thank you. Laverne?
Yeah, we did have a special work session on May the 2nd, and that was basically visiting with Larry Goldberg, architect for the Justice Center, and going through different scenarios of that project. So I think that was a worthwhile session. That's all I got.
Okay. I'll just mention earlier this week, Larry Goldberg, our architect, came in, and we discussed some of the issues having to do with the law enforcement judicial center. And of course, that is something that will, there'll be a public vote on, but it was just a discussion that we had and answered a few questions. And we're still, you know, firming up our partnership as far as with the city of Abilene, just to make sure that they have the information that we have and answering any questions they have on how they would participate and how it would all fit. Also, last week, there was a community foundation dinner. And, you know, it's just amazing when you see all of the things that the community foundation does. Craig is our board member, is a representative on there, is a board member of the community foundation. But they're able to do quite a bit of money with grants and various applications. Earlier this morning, I attended the National Day of Prayer. It was the first Thursday in May, and there was a prayer breakfast in Sterling Hall. And Colonel Clark was the speaker. He used to be Garrison Commander. He's gonna be the new president over at St. John's Military School. And he gave an excellent presentation and was well-attended. And, you know, also, there's an appreciation Sterling Hall is something that it's a place that has a lot of community events. And so they're very accommodating out there. Earlier this morning also, we had a couple of visitors in our work session. And the Sheriff's Department was in, and this is on an agenda item, so there'll be more to follow. But it was in regard to some rifles that they would like to add. Had a little bit of a general discussion of, you know, some of the situations that they might run into, that they just need to have the preparedness in place. And also have the firepower if it's ever needed, any force of that kind. We had Larry Riot stop in briefly and express his concern about the property taxes. And of course, he had received, I think, his valuation, and so, like all of us have received that are residents. And of course, the county is a portion of that. So I don't know if he's gonna go to the school board or City Hall along with us. But anyway, he stopped in to express his concern on that. We had Judge Powers in earlier and discussing some of the things with the Eighth Judicial District, which we are part of, but what some of the anticipated costs are as far as the budget. And actually, they seem pretty good. They're kind of staying about the same or going down in a few areas of their budget. Is there anything else as far as Commissioner comments?
Lynn, we do have a meeting tonight up at Concordia, and it's more KAC's presentation on taxation and such. Was I gonna be able to catch a ride with you, Brad?
We'll let you go with us. Yes.
You know what time that is?
We'll leave about 4:00, 4:15.
And where does that end up at Concordia?
In Venice Center. You know where the downtown is, Lynn?
Yes.
The block to the south of there. It's on that street there, right on the...
Is it west of there a couple blocks?
Yeah, no, it's just west, one block.
Okay.
Janelle's been there before, so...
Yeah, I think that's where I did a presentation a couple years ago.
Cloud County Ben Center.
Yeah.
The Kansas Association of Counties has regional suppers, and so that way, everyone from across the state can attend. And they have some out in western Kansas and south central and so on. There's one at Emporia. But the closest one for us mileage-wise is Concordia. And so Cloud County is the host, and there'll probably be, I imagine, five or six surrounding counties that will be in attendance. But we'll have an update on legislative issues and things like that, so... Okay. There are no petitions or proclamations. We do have a public comment. Before we have this, this from Chelsea, we have some students that are visiting us today. And that's, I guess, part of your curriculum, that you get to come in and see us and hear what we have to say. And so if you'd please introduce yourselves and then tell us maybe where you are in your schooling and what you hope to learn from today, or what questions you might have in general. We can either answer them or throughout the meeting, maybe the answers will come forth. So if you'd please stand and introduce yourself. Okay, and your first name was?
Taysha.
Okay.
Okay. Amanda Wilson, I'm seeing her, I'll be graduating here soon. And I just wanted to figure out what kind of procedures you guys go through every day.
Okay. And it's a class assignment. And now, so like on your questionnaire, what are some of the things that you're supposed to find out in today's meeting?
Describe an issue discussed, why is it important to the community, who spoke, and what did he or she say? And then describe discussions and how they can impact you and your family.
And this is part of a class requirement, so we're glad you chose us to come here. And do you have to go to other groups besides us, or have you already? Or just the last ones on first and last both, maybe? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we don't leave you out.
I'm James Blesk, I'm a senior. And I'm through, I'm in virtual school. So like, I have to attend, we do a service leadership project. We do 40 hours of community service as long as, and you have to attend, for me, it's eight different community meetings.
Okay.
So this is eight of eight.
All right.
So the best for last.
Yeah.
And then when we finish our meeting, I think there's some forms that you need to have assigned that you were in attendance, and we appreciate you being here and hope it's a learning experience for you. And good luck with your future endeavors. Okay.
I gotta put them through the grill, Lynn?
I will say no question.
Yeah, I can say you're not gonna grill them. Well, no, I hate to be the one to be the bad guy. What do you think the county does?
Well, I guess he's asking that for some of you to answer.
A lot of things. Anything from county public works to different county policies, to different county programs.
What a nice general answer. That was a politician answer there.
And some, and some things we do have to do with roads and bridges. And, you know, who's the one that takes care of them? And, you know, earlier I mentioned someone was concerned about the taxes that they pay on their property. But the taxes that are collected, I mean, that's, it does provide services. And some of the employees here that provide the services. When you get your driver's license, this is one of the places you could come to get that. Do y'all drive, I imagine? So did you get your car tags here, or maybe your parents got them for you, or someone helped you get those?
Don't everybody speak at once?
Yeah, I'm kind of doing the question and feeding the answer at the same time, so I'm making it easy for you.
I don't have a license yet.
Okay.
I have a driver's license.
We also have the courtroom and the jail here. And of course, that's something you like to think the community's safe, because people are in jail. But it's something we, you know, hope none of you ever have to use. But once you, and you know, when you say something like that, if you're the victim, you're kind of hoping that the other person that's committed the crime or wrongdoing, I mean, that's part of the penalty they pay. So sometimes people get called in for jury duty, and so that takes place here in this building. Okay, Chelsea is really ready to go, and I think the students are ready for Chelsea to go too. So anyway, if you'd want to make your comments, Chelsea Meyer Morris with USDA, and it's about the fire district grant.
Yeah. Do they have all the forms?
They do have all the forms. I killed a tree for them this morning, so they're good to go.
Thank you. We gotta cut, cut cuss at the federal level whenever we can, so... I'm here today, I've been working with Chad and the Dickinson Road Fire District Two on a grant so they can install some garage doors at their facility there in Hope, Kansas. I'm here today to present the funding package and have some forms for you to sign. There's a couple of resolutions that relate to the project that need to be passed. I don't know if you have any particular order that matters.
Not really. I've got the resolution and then some of the stuff that need to be filled out for you. And so how do you go through it?
The first one is the approved resolution. This is a resolution just that you are authorizing the chairman to sign up on the forms as they relate to the grant and accept the conditions of the grant.
And that's this one. And actually listed, you had me kind of quick when I listed the chairman or myself as administrator.
That's fine, that's perfectly fine.
Administration of that stuff, so...
And I think we'll just do this step by step. So we keep all the resolutions in order. So at this time, I'd go ahead and make the motion, and then we'll have you continue after that.
Sure, sure, that's fine.
I'd make the motion that we adopt Resolution 050417. And we have the second. And this does authorize, as chairman, to sign onto this project. Any discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And so that's our first resolution of, how many do we have?
Just two.
Just two, oh, okay, well, this is gonna be...
Two resolutions and some forms. We do one for all of the forms that weigh you over. The second resolution is the procurement standards for transactions involving the grant dollars that we are awarding to you today. First page is the resolution, and attached is the federal procurement that applies to the purchases. I'm confident that you're already following these anyway. They line up very similar to the state statutes, so...
That's the community...
No, it's the resolution of governing body. It's that one there.
The chair of the department, it's probably in this guy.
Which one is it, Brad? I'm not sure, I gotta try one.
It's this one that looks like that. It's probably towards the bottom of your stack.
Okay, yeah, whereas...
We'll call that 050417A.
So we'll need a motion to adopt that?
Okay, I move that we adopt Resolution 050417A.
Second.
We have the motion and the second for adoption of that resolution. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The next item I will go through is the letter. This is our letter of conditions. A lot of, I won't go through every single thing on here. A lot of it's government lingo about not discriminating and providing a direct free workplace. The county currently has a low rural development for the sewer out at Detroit. So we've already done most of this thing. Anyway, this letter is the conditions for the county to accept a grant totaling $5,300 for the Dickinson Road Fire District Two. And the applicant for the fire district will be contributing the remaining $30,078, for a total of $35,378. Those funds are to pay for the purchase and installation of lighting and overhead doors. Some of the requirements to be aware of is that our money, we have to have evidence of the other money for the project before we can release our funds. We have to have fidelity bond coverage on the officials entrusted with receipt and dispersment of the funds. I'm sure you're already doing that. Insurance has to be maintained on the facility that the grant is for. We need evidence of those requirements before we can disperse our funds. If at any time after we make the grant, within, I would say, the first three-year period, the grant needs intense to sell or get rid of the property, you need to be made aware of that. Don't see that being a problem.
Was there a time limit when this needed, project needed to be done?
You have five years before we'll take it back from you. I would hope this be done quickly.
We're moved in.
I was gonna say. Once we get done today, we will obligate the funds to our account. There is a comment period at the federal level for congressmen, where they have the opportunity to make the official announcement that you've been awarded. If they choose to do that, you might get a call from Moran or Roberts. If not, you'll get a letter from us in about seven days, and then the money can be spent. Again, pretty standard, there is some servicing requirements. However, as I mentioned, you're already providing us the documents we need annually, and we can use those for the servicing of this loan, so there's no extra steps on that. Are there any questions on anything in the letter of conditions?
And do we have to vote to accept the letter of conditions?
No, it was in that resolution. Yep. The next step then would be to execute this letter of intent to meet conditions. And that was in that first resolution.
Chad, do you want to make some comments on how this is gonna improve your fire department there?
The only comments I have that I guess I would make is we are moved in. Construction went very well. I was very pleased with the contract we used out of Alta Vista. They're very accommodating, will flow with us and everything. My personally, that's your company installed the lighting and kind of rewired the building. That went well. We did move in. What day was that? The third Tuesday of last month was the official move-in day. We have a few little tidbits to finish, but as far as what this grant is covering, all that is done and working well.
And Chad, for the benefit of the students that are here, and Chelsea, maybe you can answer this, but just kind of in layman's terms, or put it just exactly what the project was and the grant, and then maybe, you know, are you a full-time fireman, or are you...
Okay. Our fire department or our fire district is Dickinson County Fire District Number Two. We cover a good portion of the southern half of Dickinson County, kind of right in the middle. Basically going from Highway 15 over to about, I guess, our east boundary kind of zigzags around over there between Oak Road and Trail Road. But we can actually cover 208 square miles is what we cover. Our original fire station's right there, I mean, was in the city of Hope. I mean, they built that building back in the 50s when the Hope Rule Fire Department, what it was called then, was established. Moved into that building then. Plenty of room, but the equipment's gotten bigger, that kind of thing. And we kind of outgrown the building, and we had the opportunity to purchase another building there in town, which we did, but it had to be reconstructed a little bit to serve our needs. Part of that reconstruction was the doors that Chelsea was talking about. We installed five overhead doors along the south wall. Basically completely tore out the south wall and put in five doors along there to be able to house all the trucks in there properly. We also have another, a second substation up in the bar. Also has five bays in that one as well, so we can hopefully serve our fire district adequately between the two stations. And, I mean, it is a 100% rule or volunteer department. We have no full-time people, so pager goes off. Everybody has to be patient, because who knows where we're gonna be, what we're doing. So that is kind of a bad thing about a rule or a volunteer department, that you just don't know when it's gonna happen and who's gonna show up.
But that is one way we efficiently and effectively serve that area, is it's through volunteerism. And so this isn't his regular job, but it's someone that's trained, that can still help his neighbors and whatever the call comes out. That's where small communities survive sometimes.
And being a volunteer department the way we are, our money solely comes from the property taxes that people pay within that fire district. We get a small percentage of that that we have to work off of. So working with organizations like USDA, with Chelsea, and various other ones to try and attempt to get grant dollars to help pay for additional things is kind of important. Kind of pulling hands' teeth to get it sometimes, but we always try.
Thank you.
Yes, I want to really thank the volunteers, because that is something that you have to have a passion for doing that. And like I say, I've lived in the rural area all my life, and it's really amazing how quickly those volunteers get there and help you out. And there's been multiple times when, right in my area, that they have helped. You know, it would've been a disaster if we wouldn't have had fire protection in our areas. So we really appreciate that.
When I'm finished with the paperwork, if you don't mind, I'm just gonna give a spiel about rural development and all we can do for rural communities anyway, so...
Oh, okay.
Maybe they'll learn something there.
Yes, that'd be fun.
Yeah, the next form is the request for obligation of funds. This is where you sign on the back. No, it's just a one-page, well, it was a two-page. Oh, did you already send that one over? Okay. And then, yeah, the last one is this grant agreement. This is the official, gets locked in a fireproof safe. When I go back to the office today, we will get the paperwork sent to Topeka to officially reserve the fund. As I mentioned, in about seven to 10 days, you'll get the ones that are signed by our agency back. And that's the official, everything's done, and we'll draw down the money for chat.
And your office is located...
I am in Newton.
In Newton. And so how many USDA representatives are there for the state? Are you a regional, so you're...
Right.
Cover several counties?
Yes, we have an office in Topeka, an office in Miola, my office in Newton, and an office in Haynes. And in our program, we have about six of us who administer water and waste loans and grants and community facility loans and grants for the entire state. We had a gentleman previously, his name is Kevin McCann. I don't know if you ever met him. He was out of Manhattan and then out of Topeka. He's left the agency in Kansas and lives in Colorado now. And so I've kind of taken over some of his areas, so... Rural Development, like I mentioned, has programs for housing, single-family housing. We can do home loans, multi-family housing, apartment buildings, elder buildings, things like that. And we have business programs. We can do small business loans, renewable energy programs for ad producers, and then the community facilities and backups. And all of our money is for rural America, rural communities. Because they're slowly declining in population, and they need resources sometimes that aren't available to them to survive and be committed to keep the rural communities trying to be strong. I have some brochures for you. We're pretty active right now in Dickinson County. I've been working with the city of Hope and the city of Enterprise on their projects. The city of Enterprise is doing a sewer project to connect to those lagoons out there at Detroit. The city of Hope is doing a water line replacement project. I'm also working with Dickinson Rural Water District Number One on a big line replacement project. We hope to get that funded this summer so they can get their lines replaced. I'm also working over in Harrington, which is in, oh, no, it is in Dickinson County. I know they've kind of set on that line there, so... We're working with Harrington also on a new water treatment facility over there. So I'm happy to come out here. We can, lots of, we can do a lot for the county if we have the need. I know we have worked previously, or tried to work with Janelle on the Justice Center and as a possible financier for that. and as a possible financier for that, which is financing, so that's great to see that project coming to fruition. So, are there any questions for me or anything?
I don't have any.
Thank you, Raj. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Soon she gets back with that last one, I'll give you these originals.
Okay, great, and then I will.
Make sure we've got them all.
And then I will make sure to send the packet.
I just happened to go through, I wasn't here last week, or I'm not gonna be attending the Evelyn Convention and Visitors Bureau after hours, or either one of you two are gonna be attending. We need the RSVP. If we are, two of you are gonna be, we need to get on our counter.
Okay. Yeah, we'll go through that on notices and communications.
Well, maybe you have your folder there.
Maybe. I might take yours if you.
Yeah. I got EDC meeting that night.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to check.
Okay, at this time, we'll have our report from our county administrator, Grant Holman.
Okay, I'm gonna talk about a number of things here that, in my update, that have to do with some of those benefits and functions of county, what county does for the, for the students. One of the things, the first thing here is to let you know that the Sheriff's Department is arranging an extradition in Johnson County, Missouri, of an individual who was wanted on war for some type of a crime. That cost of that extradition would be three-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars if we take it from the diversion fund. And that situation is where someone is wanted and he's outside the state of Kansas and we have to pay to have him picked up at that Sheriff's Department in Johnson County, Missouri, and brought back to Dickinson County to stand trial or be held accountable for his actions, so, we get to pay for that function. You also have the year-to-date staffing report in your packet and we have a hundred and forty-three employees in, in the month of April, doing county functions. We have had four new hires that filled some of those vacancies since last month, one in dispatch in the nine-to-one center, two in EMS, and one in jails, corrections officers.
We got one more corrections officer to fill?
I think you still have one more that's vacant. It seems like there are always one or two lagging behind, so. But those are some of the departments that we are responsible for. Also, your year-to-date budget reports from Janelle. It's too, really too early, you're gonna make too many comments about it, everything's kind of normal as with every month, the sales tax is one that we look at and it is up about four thousand dollars from last month, ninety-two thousand in special sales tax and ninety-five thousand in the regular sales tax, which is up about the same amount from, from the month of January, always a couple months behind, so. As far as the department budgets, there's nothing that's alarming there, everything's pretty normal for being a quarter of the way through the, through the year, so. If you have any questions on any of that, I'm sure you can answer it or would you know to answer that? But that is a hundred and forty-some employees that were responsible in the fifteen or so different departments the county operates, so. We do, just to give you an update, we were notified earlier this week that the contractor plans to come back on March, I'm sorry, we're past March, on May eighth and close the Jeep Road Bridge for a day or so, or they're telling us three to five days, or maybe two, to do the seal coat on top of it, and as soon as they're done there, they'll move over and solve the other bridge and get it sealed coated and then they'll be complete, so. But we've, we've made notifications to all the appropriate entities, found that the road will be closed, school, post office, all that, so. Your budget hearings start next week, we'll be, your meeting, your work session will start at eight in the morning instead of nine, and that's when the fund begins for several weeks of dealing with the different entities and hearing your budget requests. Camp nine-one-one set for, to start on June thirteenth, the annual camp of fifth graders that come in. Typically, we have about fifty or so kids that participate in that. This year, they have seventy-five applicants, so we've had a really good response and, and John was telling me this morning that they chose to go ahead and invite all seventy-five. I think they can do that, they need it determined anyway, so that's a really good deal. It's good that we have that, that increased number, Camp nine-one-one. Did any of you guys go to Camp nine-one-one? No? No? Okay. Well, that's strictly a donation and, and a three-day product that they get to spend out at Camp Brown with members of the various emergency first responder entities, fire departments, EMS, nine-one-one from around the county, and they teach the kids the importance of emergency services and the different functions and they get to have a lot of fun, get to learn a lot. In the past, they've always had the helicopter from my star out there, they get to see the helicopter, they come in and leave and, and take off and they, they get a pretty good education and I know those kids from years past, I've seen them, they get a T-shirt and they, they wear them very proudly and for a long time, so.
Yeah, I was out there a couple of years ago and I, I was only there for like a couple hours and, and the railroad safety was there and they showed some videos of trains and cars and stuff that, you know, it's pretty graphic.
They have the, the seatbelt safety unit from the Highway Patrol out there teaching the importance of that, just a whole gauntlet of different things that they go through. It's really good education for those kids, so. Also in your package, you've got a copy of a letter that we received back in March from Reno County. It's signed by their, the Mayor of Hutchinson, the city manager, also the county administrator and county commissioners, thanking the different agencies from around the state that responded to their wildfire situation. From Dickinson County, I know Chad, who's gone now, but Chad and him, himself and a couple of his personnel took a truck or two down. We actually had an EMS unit that went down for an afternoon to help when they thought it was gonna spread into the city of Hutchinson. Fortunately, it didn't. And then John and, and the EMS director from Clay County were in Wichita for a meeting and they went over and helped out for an afternoon. I think the Harrington Fire Department had a truck over there as well, so. We did have some resources from Dickinson County that went and helped them and that's, they're just wanting to express their appreciation for that help and the various agencies coming to their aid in their time of need, so, it's very nice to know. And then the last thing I had for the update was potential, just let you know that sometime in the near future, I've been talking to the city manager, Jay Newton, for the city of Applin, and I think we both feel like it might be a good idea to have a lunch between the city and county administration and, or the city commissioners, county commissioners himself and myself to kind of go over some of the issues of the Justice Center and kind of bring everybody up to speed, so. We'll try and come up with a date and a location and do that here in the near future. I'll let you know next week, so.
It, it may be helpful if we did that in June and what I'm thinking is what the deadline, if there are any people that happen to decide that they want to run for the city commission position, you know, then, then have opportunity to attend just to kind of see what the discussion is as well as the current commissioners and, and, you know, possibly the current commissioners will refile too, I mean, but.
Just later, I have the filing deadlines.
Wait till after the filing deadlines.
Got an idea?
Mid-June if that's, of course, you always have harvest issues, so kind of jumped in on your suggestion.
First part, yeah, first week or two there. Of course, our harvest might be earlier, but usually not the first week in June.
All right. Okay. Good. That's all I've got, unless you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. I'll go to, Doug, do you have anything for us?
No, I do not, but thank you.
And we do have, we did add to the agenda for an executive session at the end for ten minutes.
Yes.
Okay. As far as anything, things that we've received in the mail, notices and communications, as Craig mentioned earlier, there is a business after hours for travel and tourism week on the CBD and that's gonna be Thursday, May eleventh, and in all likelihood, I, I plan on attending, so. It says they do appreciate the RSVP, I think, just so they can get an idea of the numbers.
And you might make a comment, if, if more than one of us is gonna attend, we have to publish it that we'll be attending as, as we cannot meet, if two of us meet, we've broke the open meetings violation. And if we meet socially and stuff like that, just having a class by is no problem, but if we would be attending this meeting and we knew we were gonna be attending, we need to publish it.
And, dear, the true.
I'm, I know I won't be there, I'm gonna have a meeting that night.
Yeah. Go ahead and publish it, 'cause I might be able to attend too.
Okay, from the Department of Commerce, State of Kansas, it's just notification that there was a meeting with Brad and Janelle Dokndor and Emily Benedict is the grant administrator in regards to the Canstep program, and it was just something where they do monitor the progress of that and, and verify contractors involved and so on. It's kind of a housekeeping type thing, but anyway, we did receive official notification of that.
Did you get that letter also, Brad?
Yeah, yeah, I do.
There's just a couple of things that they wanted us to.
Actually, there's another letter came out the following day, you must not have, it's a clarification.
The corrected letter?
Yeah, it's a corrected letter.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it, those issues were taken care of, so.
Okay. And so, we did receive the updated letter. We also have a letter from North Central Can, Central Flint Hills Area Agency on the aging and I believe they're requesting a letter of support, so I will have Brad review that, we can have that, any follow-up action on that. I did have Pat Sweeney stop by my office and she had been copied in on the letter and is one of the board of directors, a local person, and so she wanted me to just be aware that we had received that. And, of course, Barbara Jones also is copied in on this, so I. This is from the K-State Research and Extension Office, so. Pretty nice folder they put all this in. It's just, "On behalf of your local county extension director, the Office of Local Government is pleased to provide you with copies of the Eighteenth Annual Dixon County Fiscal Conditions and Trends." And so these reports are helpful and there's, there's copies for all of us, and so this is for your review and.
Yeah, that's very interesting information and that we get every year and very helpful information.
Okay, are there any other notices or communications any of you would want to bring up that may have not been brought to my attention?
There was nothing on the computer.
The next thing that we'll do is there were a couple of additions to our agenda and the, the first one has to do with review and consider a resolution amending animal exposure. And Brad, if you'd kind of give us a summary of what that involves and the purpose of this resolution.
This is an amendment to an existing resolution that we had in place already. The request comes from the Health Department, from the Sheriff's Department. The resolution itself has to do with handling of animals that have been either bitten somewhere or potentially exposed to a disease, specifically rabies, and in the resolution, there are a couple of additions, a couple of sections, and they, they deal exclusively with allowing the owner of the animal to quarantine the animal on their own premises for a specified time period. The previous resolution did not have that allowance in it and what we've found over the years is a number of people, they would keep the animal at home and save them the expense of taking it to the animal hospital for ten days. However, we didn't have that allowance in there, they had to do that, so what we, the end result was the animal hospital or the county was getting stuck with the bill for those quarantines, especially in the situation where the person just didn't have the money to pay for it. And this gives us the allowance, it gives the sheriff and the county health officer the authority that if, if the conditions are such that the owner will agree to quarantine the animal, has the facilities, they can do that and it gives the Sheriff's Department the ability to go back and check and make sure that they were doing it properly for that ten days and, essentially what it's doing is getting the same job done, but it's saving the veterinary clinics that we use to quarantine them, the cost of eating that if they don't get paid, so. Just kind of tweaking things a little bit to suit the current needs, I guess, is.
So, everything in yellow is added?
That is added language, yes, yes.
I think we need to let all the veterinaries know about these changes.
Yeah, I mean, they, they get told about the situation whenever they, somebody's, the sheriff or the health officer, health department orders somebody to quarantine, but we can all make sure that they, they get informed of it.
I think it'd be helpful if they knew ahead of time that that's, that this is.
Because the quarantine can only be authorized by the sheriff or health officer, so.
Do you think this should be tabled or are you just, you just want to make sure that they have copies of what we've done?
Yes, I, I just think that they need to know this because, like I say, they might, if they didn't know, they might think that they have to quarantine it themselves instead of the owner of the animal.
Make sure we get copies of D-12 quarantine, so.
And, you know, there, there could be the situation that the sheriff or whoever goes out there could tell that there's lots of red flags that indicate that it's, rabies might be an issue and in that instance, I mean, they probably would take other steps, but where, where it's, say, a family pet, that maybe they should've gotten some shots and they never, and they just want to be on the side of safety and so on, it's, they can easily secure the animal, so, like we say, it's, and it does save the county a little bit of money if we get stuck with a few bills throughout the year. I'd go ahead and make the motion, we adopt Resolution zero-five-zero-four-one-seven-B, and this is having to do with regulation of keeping of dogs and domestic animals for the taking up and impoundment of these animals and the confinement rules that we have on that.
Second?
There's a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And there's a place for all of us to sign on this particular one. The next item we have is the request from our sheriff to purchase new rifles and we had the sheriff and undersheriff in here this morning discussing the, the need for having rifles that were more high-powered, just because we need, you know, first of all, the, the safety issue, that the safety of our officers, they need to have adequate firearms and, of course, they carry tasers, they carry, you know, their hand pistols and, and various things, but Brad, if you'd go ahead and kind of explain a little bit what this purchase is and the amount and then also the funding mechanism for this.
Okay, this is the request from the sheriff, as you said, to purchase twenty-three rifles with their related accessories from the vendor they have selected for a number of different reasons, they're patrol-type rifles that are designed for law enforcement. The funding mechanism, they, they have, we have had money in the capital outlay for this for several years and so, a portion of the funding, which would be twenty-nine-thousand four-hundred dollars, would come from our capital outlay within the budget. The remaining amount, which would be twenty-thousand nine-hundred-and-sixty-eight, would come from the diversion fund, which the county attorney and, and the sheriff have requested and given there, okay, on that. So, the total purchase price would be fifty-thousand three-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents. And the only other thing I would add, the sheriff, undersheriff indicated that the life expectancy of these, these items, these pieces of equipment are about thirty years. It felt like it was something that would last quite a while. felt like it was something that would last quite a while.
We did have a lengthy discussion with the sheriff and undersheriff about it, and it does take training to go along with that, but they have some personnel in their department that are very good at that, and have been, like I say, conducting the training for the, the deputies that would be using these guns, so that, that was one of my concerns, I guess, but that they are getting the proper training for the use of them, and it's mainly just a safety precaution for our deputies that are out there, and like I say, it's, the general public has access to the same type of weapons, and so it, it's something that we don't want to be outmatched by, and so.
Some of all those purchases you hope like heck we never have to use, but if you do need them, you don't have time to go looking, so.
One thing I appreciate, undersheriff mentioned that they do have the individuals, and I know you touched on this a little bit, but they have the individuals within the department that have received training, and one of them attended a SWAT training-type school and, and received high marks, and so, you know, we really have an outstanding sheriff's department, and, and this is just equipping them with some of the things that they need to have, so. And the, like Brad mentioned, this would come out of our capital outlay fund and also the diversion fund, so is there a motion for this particular purchase?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have the motion and the second for the purchase of the Sheriff's Department of 23 of these rifles and the related associated components with it. The total amount's gonna be $50,368, which will come out of capital outlay and the diversion fund, and I might mention, one of the things that is important as this is, is there is a value as far as the type of weaponry it is and how it's constructed, but also the supplier of this is someone that they can go back to, where you might say you have the service after the sale or the questions are all answered, and so, that's all I have. Any other comments? Okay.
Well, they, they also have came up, have brought this rifle up, and deputies have had an opportunity to use them when they've.
Tested.
Tested on the range, and so it's not unknown to them what they're, what they're buying.
And this was the only vendor that was willing to do that, so that shows some service benefits as well.
Okay, so we have the motion and the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The last item that we have is an executive session, and that's gonna take approximately 10 minutes. Before we go into executive session, I'll go ahead and, if the students, if you want to bring your reports, we'll go ahead and sign these, and this way, this is like getting out of school early, because we're gonna stay another 10, 15 minutes. So if you'd bring those up, we'll sign those, and thank you again for coming here.
And while you're doing that, all make the motion, we go into executive session at 11:55 for 10 minutes, for non-elected personnel.
Okay, I'll second that. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
And this would include Brad and also Doug Thompson, our county attorney, so all in favor of going into executive session for non-elected personnel and administrative, 11:55, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Hopefully you'll be more interested in what the county does and, and look into all the services that we do provide, like if you need an ambulance to come to your place, or you need to go to the Health Department for something, or.
Call 911.
911, if, in the middle of the night, that EMS and 911 is 24-hour service, so if you want to call at 2 o'clock in the morning, that, you will get an answer with 911, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a lot of those unknown things that you don't realize sometimes that it's available.
Thank you.
11:55. Motion, the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There's no further action to be taken or business, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
I'll second it.
You have the motion and the second for adjournment. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We adjourn.